The meeting will now come to order. We are now holding the December meeting of the Fayette County School Corporation's Board of School Trustees. Tonight, we have with us students from Maplewood that are going to be leading us in the plan, so would you stand for our pledge?
Aye.
Let us raise our hands to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Cursaro from Maplewood is now here to give us a little bit of what's going on at Maplewood.
Hi, well, thank you, good evening. I'm going to let them set up while I'm talking because they're going to do some things with their iPads, and so it's going to take us a little bit of time to kind of get set up. So while they're getting set up, I just want to kind of give you an overview of our current performance. Maplewood continues to show academic growth. Seventy-five percent of our students are passing both ELA and mathematics, which is up from last year by three percent. We did show a drop in our ELA performance overall, but our math performance is the highest that it has been, at eighty-six percent of our students showing mastery of the Indiana Math Standards. In our school improvement plan, we have a goal to increase our use of technology, and I know as we move forward, Dr. Riki will be sharing some new strategies that as administrators we're working on called blended learning. But part of our school improvement plan is to use technology in our classrooms to take students to another level, so that they are using technology and in combination with the academic standards, and we're having a blended curriculum. So tonight, what I've asked Mrs. Weber to do, her class is kind of taking on the role of using the iPads. We purchased an iPad mobile kind of unit that currently is housed in her classroom, just so that we can get her trained. She's also our tech go-to person, so we felt it was probably in our best interest to train one teacher and then have her do some modeling, and then eventually we're going to take that same technology and move it around the building. But I thought it would be a great opportunity for us to show you guys. I know you've seen some of the things that middle school and high school has done with their piloting with the one-to-one. We are nowhere near that, but we are starting to integrate some technology, and the kids love it. And so at this time, I'm going to let Mrs. Weber take over and kind of explain to you what they've been working on in their classrooms.
Good evening. As Mrs. Cursaro said, we are using iPads in the classroom every day, and in fact, when we pick them up in the morning, we sit them on our tables and use them, and they stay there until the end of the day, and we put them back in, and sometimes we have to charge them because we've been using them a lot, so they're great. Kids love them. And last Wednesday, we've been pushing one app a week, and we did get these right after fall break, and we learned the Book Creator app, and so the kids have been having some fun with that, and these three volunteered to create a book to share with you. So we have Brady who has, he's on airplay if he wants to come up. Okay, with Book Creator, these students have added sound, text, pictures. They can do drawing, but they did not draw on this one, and they've added video. So Brady, if you want to go ahead.
Humans are using too many natural resources. Many of them are non-renewable, like coal, petroleum, and natural gas. They take thousands of years to form. We need to conserve them. Look at all the coal in these pictures. In 2010, the United States was the second-largest energy consumer. Seventy-two percent of our energy came from coal. Only eight point four percent was from renewables, which is, coal will run out someday. If we keep using up all of our natural resources like petroleum, we won't be able to drive cars with gasoline. It is non-renewable. Once it's gone, the earth won't have any luck. On the line graph, you can see how many oil barrels the world uses every ten years. It is increasing rapidly. Look at that huge hole in the picture. That huge hole is called a strip mine. Humans dig up natural resources that will be completely gone. Plants die, and animals must leave places where humans mine. Many animals die. In the picture, the amount of iron ore, iron ore is used to make steel. We can recycle steel, but we have to remember that fossil fuels are used for this to happen. Here's a picture of people burning up fossil fuels. Burning fossil fuels also heats up our atmosphere. That can result in global warming. Human-made environmental grasses burn inside can happen when we remove too many trees and run over the earth. We also dump trash in our earth. Did you know that when you throw away trash, you are creating pollution? All of the trash in the picture causes pollution. Air pollution and water pollution can be created by landfills. We need to reduce, reuse, and recycle. Strip mines and landfills can be reclaimed again, but it takes many years for regrowth. We have to make a difference. My generation will be affected. I wrote this book because science is my favorite subject in school. I like science because I like to do experiments, and I like to learn about mineral. This is why I wrote this book. I am concerned about our earth. Here is a picture of an experiment I did this year. Here is a picture of me at Maplewood Elementary School. My teacher is Miss Weber.
Each student chose their topic, just things that we've learned this year that they wanted to take and study further.
Alex Swinney.
By 1776, many people known as colonists had settled in the thirteen colonies along the Atlantic coast. They had left their homeland for religious freedom and a better way of life. They made a home with many struggles like war, hunger, and sickness.
One of those wars was called the French-Indian War. The British had spent a lot of money to protect the colonists. They wanted to tax goods to get money back. The colonists agreed to pay taxes if they could be part of the government decisions. The British denied their request. The Boston Tea Party proved to Britain that the colonists would not agree to pay the This angered the colonists. They wrote the Declaration of Independence to declare freedom from British rule. The British would not agree to independence, so the fight became known as the Revolutionary War. It went on for six years. The Battle of Yorktown is known as one of the most important battles of the Revolutionary War. General Charles Cornwallis of the British Army led seven thousand soldiers to Yorktown, Virginia. They were waiting on supplies to be delivered. General Charles Cornwallis, right picture. Cornwallis thought he would be safe in Yorktown. James Armistead, an American spy, had tricked him. He thought the Americans would attack British headquarters in New York City. Instead, General George Washington and French soldiers surrounded Cornwallis. James Armistead, bottom picture. Chesapeake Bay was blocked by the French Navy. There was no escape for Cornwallis and his troops. They had to fight. French and American troops fought the British Army for three weeks at Yorktown. Finally, on October nineteenth, seventeen eighty-one, the British surrendered. The Americans won the Revolutionary War. This allowed them to set up a new national government. The Constitution of the United States was written, and General George Washington became the first U.S. President in seventeen eighty-nine. George Washington.
Hello, I'm Alex Swinney. I am in Miss Weber's fourth-grade class. I wrote this informational book because I like to read war stories. My capital was in the Vietnam War. I'm proud of my country.
Before Indiana was a state, it was called the Northwest Territory. Pioneers began to move west into the territory to settle. They found that the land was already lived on. Native American tribes like the Delaware, Shawnee, and Miami lived off land, the land. Some tribes would soon move because they signed the Treaty of Greenville to give up some of the land. The government divided the land in half when they passed the Land Ordinance of seventeen eighty-five. The eastern part was the Ohio Territory, and the western part was the Indiana Territory. President John Adams named William Henry Harrison as the first governor. While governor, the land changed shape again into four territories. Michigan and Illinois were formed by eighteen oh nine. Harrison encouraged people to move to the area. Most of them moved to the southern part because Native Americans still lived in the north. The pioneers wanted this land. Harrison used money, and the threat of war to move the Native Americans out. William Connor, the brother of John, helped sign treaties. He could speak their language. One Native American leader of Shawnee named Tecumseh was not happy about the treaties. Harrison met with Tecumseh, but they could not agree. Tecumseh joined with the British during the War of eighteen twelve. He was killed in the Battle of Tams. The Native Americans had to leave the land. By eighteen fifteen, the population in the Indiana Territory was more than sixty thousand. This was enough to apply to become a state. The people chose forty-three delegates to write a constitution. It was like the U.S. Constitution on December eleventh, eighteen sixteen. President James Madison signed a law for Indiana to become a state.
I'm Bailey Swinney. I go to Maplewood School. I'm in Mrs. Weber's fourth-grade class. I love having iPads in our class. I think it's fun to make books, writing with Jocast, and reading articles on News LA.
We had to finish because my class really enjoyed iPads. Thank you for your time. So you can tell how much and how valuable these tools are to the kids. It allows us to take nonfiction texts and put it in a different format that gets the kids excited and engaged in their learning. So I hope that if you're ever out and about and you have an opportunity to stop in at Maplewood, that you stop into this classroom and you see all of the great things that Mrs. Weber and her fourth graders are doing with technology, and we appreciate you taking this time this evening to listen to us, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cursaro, Ms. Weber, and students. We appreciate so much for being here. And parents and students, you're certainly welcome to stay, but we are now moving into the business portion of the meeting, so if you would prefer to leave, now would be a good time for you to do that.
to approve the agenda as submitted.
I'll move that one.
Thank you, Mr. Hahn. And did you second?
Yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Are there any patron comments on agenda items at this time? Seeing none, we move on to the consent agenda. In the consent agenda is the approval of the minutes from the regular business meeting of eleven, eleven fourteen, and executive meeting of eleven, eleven fourteen. The personnel report, which contained retirements, resignations, leaves of absence, et cetera. Approval of November two thousand and fourteen claims number three seven three seven two through number three seven seven two two. Approval of the end-of-year business office procedures. Appointment of Brian Jennings to the Fayette County Area Planning Commission. Donations, the acceptance of a donation of one thousand dollars from Walmart for Eastview Elementary, and a donation of the book Queen of American Agriculture for every Fayette County School Corporation's fourth grade from the historic Connorsville. A donation of six hundred and sixty dollars from the East Central Indiana Board of Realtors for the CHS Food Pantry, and a donation from the Rush Shelby Energy for the CHS Coral Program valued at four thousand and thirty-two dollars. Those are the items contained within the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to accept them or approve them?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Hilton.
I move to approve.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Savoy. The motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. At this time, we'll be moving into our discussion items, which is the public hearing on superintendent's contract, and we will now open the meeting for any public comment that would need to be made. I do want to know that the superintendent's contract has been presented, it's been in the newspaper, it has been on our website for a couple of weeks maybe, I'm not sure just how long, but it has been posted and stuff, and so we are ready to move on that. With that being said, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Ms. Kerschner?
Yes, thank you very much, and I would like to say I'm very much looking forward to being on the board after the first of the year. I sent a letter to all of the board members expressing my extreme displeasure with having this brought up at this time. Dr. Hodges' contract is not nearly up for renegotiation in any time soon, and I just find it very interesting that he's asking for more money at a time when the Fayette County School Corporation is hurting for money. The teachers and other personnel have been told there's not much money for raises. Well, if there's not much money for people in the trenches, I just don't understand why there's this much money for an upper administrator. His salary is very adequate compared to other superintendents around here. I just simply do not understand the rush to do this at this time. One of the things that I really learned in my campaign was the people at Fayette County are not really very happy with how money is distributed. I haven't been happy with it for five years, and that is, that's no secret. I let that be known five years ago when I first retired. My view on that has not changed. I think it is unconscionable at this time for the superintendent to ask for a raise when we're giving teacher aides twelve cents an hour, and these are the people that are working with the children. We need more people in the classrooms with the kids. I worked a hundred and forty school days last year. I'm in the classrooms, I'm in the buildings. We have needy children. It's just the way it is. To spend money on upper administration when we need people to work directly with the children would seem to be an extremely bad choice at this time. If his compensation, if I didn't think it was adequate, I would say so. I think his compensation currently is adequate. I don't understand the necessity of doing this right now. Basically speaking, you're a lame duck board. Most of you will still be on the board, but there is one new member, and that's me. And my stand on this has been the same for the last five years. It's not going to change for the fact that I'm on the school board. My passion has always been the children of Fayette County. I do a lot of volunteer work. I've been at the baseball field, I've been at the boys' club. I don't expect compensation for that. That's just what I do. People who work hard in Fayette County to make the schools better for our children deserve more respect than they get. They deserve more money than they get. If we have any extra money in this school corporation, it's my firm belief that it should be spent on the people who deal more directly with the children. You may agree, you may disagree, but the perception in the community is that some people are overpaid, and some people are underpaid, and the people that are underpaid are the ones that are working with the kids every day. The argument has been, okay, if you don't like the pay scale, go find another job. A, it's not that simple, and B, the people who go into education don't go into it for money to begin with. Nobody is a teacher aide because they think they're going to make a lot of money. Nobody is a classroom teacher because they think they're going to make a lot of money. I have a law degree, people. I could make ten times what I do as a teacher, as a lawyer. I chose not to, because my passion is doing things that benefit the children. I'm going to ask you to make decisions more in line with benefiting the children. Dr. Hodges gets a good salary. By comparison to other people in this county, he makes more, much more than the average. His salary is three times what I ever made as a teacher, and I was pretty much at the top of the scale. You know, he gets allowances for things. A lot of people don't understand those because they were published in the paper. I've had people stop me in the grocery store and say, why does the superintendent get seventy-two hundred dollars a year for a car allowance? I can't answer that. I can't answer that. I don't know the answers. I know I have a huge learning curve here, okay, but I also bring experience of working in the trenches, working in the schools every day, and I know how hard these people work. A school does not work well unless it has the support of everyone in the building. No one person's job is more important than another. You have to have the support of the custodians, the support staff, the teacher aides, the teachers, the administrators. Everybody has to be on the same page for the benefit of the children, and if we're not, we're doing the students of Fayette County a total disservice. To ask, for him to ask for a raise at this point in time in a contract extension when we're telling people that are working with the kids on a daily basis, sorry, there's no money, go find another job, seems to me, I just really don't have the words. I just think it's unconscionable that this should happen. If his contract was up, that would be another thing. Then it would be up for renewal, or whatever we chose to do, but to ask for this now, I think is bad form, and I think it's just bad, period, and the public perception is not positive in this area. You know, we represent the children and the people of Fayette County. We have to do what is in their best interest. To my mind and to the mind of many of my constituents and also some of yours, this would not be a wise decision to do. I would ask you to either reject it outright or at least table it till the new board has been seated and some more investigation can be done. As I said, I feel like I am representing the people of my district and also the citizens of Fayette County in this particular thing. I would ask you please to reject this for now, either reject it outright or again table it until the new board can be seated and some more investigation can be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kerschner. Does anyone else want to speak? Seeing no one, then I'll close the public hearing on this discussion item. Now we'll be moving into the action items. We have the Personnel Report. Dr. Bay.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Dr. Hodges is in the board. Have some items for your consideration this evening. We'll start off with the new employees. It would be Angela Dunsel, Support Staff, Title I Educational Assistant at Grandview, effective December the second. Debbie Wyler, Educational Assistant at Fayette Central, effective November the twenty-sixth. An extracurricular, Michelle Burkhead, seventh-grade girls' white basketball coach at CMS, effective November thirteenth, and Cody House, Assistant varsity wrestling coach, CHS, effective November fourteenth. In addition, I come to you with some recommendations for approval of salary to benefit In addition, I come to you with some recommendations for approval of salary benefit changes for administrators for 14, 15, and 15, 16. Administrators, in order to be eligible, of course, they have to be rated and deemed effective or highly effective. And to start off, they will pay two stipends. This is all in your background information, was sent to you in the board packet, so I won't go into a lot of detail on this, but a stipend, the amount of equal to $100 per consecutive years of service. For those rated highly effective or effective for performance would be awarded December the 15th, 2014. In addition, a second stipend equal to the Excellence in Performance Grant in the amount of $1,095 for highly effective performance and $730 for effective performance would also be awarded December 15th, 2014. And those are very similar to what the teachers received in their contract earlier this year. Retirees also would be included in this second bonus, this Excellence in Performance Grant. Retired administrators would receive the stipend equal to the Excellence in Performance Grant in the form of a 401A post-separation account if they met the eligibility for the state teacher retirement fund or the public employee retirement fund. As far as 15, 16, then, the base salary of each administrator would be increased by the formula, which was, again, outlined in your packet. And I provide an example of 261-day administrator for that. This would include years of service, half of the effective performance rating, responsibility factor, and also the days worked factor, and all of those were figured into that formula. They'd also receive in 15, 16, assuming, again, they are effective or highly effective, a stipend based on that formula, which will be awarded, outlined in the example. This would be highly effective performance if applicable, one half the effective rate, again, responsibility factor, and also days worked factor. Those would be the total package, again, for 14, 15, and 15, 16 for administrators. If there are no questions, I'll go on to the second area, which is a salary benefit change for non-union, non-certified staff for 15, 16. There was a pool of money established, $75,760 established, and that comes out to a raise of 2.64%. Again, very similar to other employee groups, with 1.78% of that increase going on base salary for non-union, non-certified staff for 2015 and 2016. Employees, in order to receive that, must re-employ it 120 days or more and be rated as highly effective or effective to be eligible. There's also a, two stipends. One, if they're a highly perfected performer, 10% of that total pool would go, be, go to those entitled to this additional stipend, and it would be based on employee rate of pay and the hours worked, so it would vary depending on whether they worked 180 days. We have some of our people, like assistants, work 180, some are non-union, non-cert, work 261 or full. And then finally, the stipend remaining of the funds that were distributed, then would go to highly effective and effective following the base salary, and also the highly effective performance, what is left, who've been evenly distributed among effective and highly perfected, highly effective performers. The last part, number four, recommendation for approval of non-union, non-certified pay adjustments for level changes. With the changes of compensation based on performance now, rather than seniority, it's been more of a challenge to fairly compensate the non-union and non-certified staff that have excelled at a previous level and desire to move to a higher level. So what we've looked at is taken the old formula, and it also was included in your background information, add zero experience, and subtract that from the new level with the zero experience, and that would give us a rate. In this case, if we use levels nine and eight, I just use that as an example, the difference between a nine zero experience and a level eight zero experience is about $1.23. So that would be added on to the original salary that they had, or there's an hourly rate they had, and if they were using, for example, a level nine, if they were topped out the very end of that scale, it was $11.80, so we'd see that $11.80 plus the $1.23, and that would then put their rate at 13.03. So that would be a fair way. We think that it fairly reflects the increase, matches the acceptance of newly assigned or greater challenging positions that they go to. So I think that's a fair way to compensate them for that. And that is outside any kind of increases above or beyond, obviously, but it would just be the basic formula for that. With that, Mr. Virchus, I don't entertain any questions. If not, that concludes my report and information to you this evening for action.
Thank you, Dr. Vayer. Do any of you have any questions or concerns? Okay, with that, excuse me, I'm doubting my voice here, but anyway, do, what issue, what would you like to do? Would you like to approve this report, or what?
I'll make a motion to approve the report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Ms. Collins. Any questions, discussion again? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Okay, next, we move into the approval of the superintendent's contract. Is anyone having questions or any comments that they would like to make at this time in the board? Mr. Taylor?
I'd like to make a comment. I think there may be some confusion out in the public and perhaps even in the school corporation about Dr. Hodges' optional performance portion of his contract. 10 years ago, when he came to the corporation, the board at that time felt it would be a good idea to put a performance piece in the superintendent's contract. And so, the board did. And the thinking behind that was, is that the performance portion would be related to student performance. And over the last 10 years, in spite of everything that's happened in this county, and in spite of everything, the changes that have come from the state level, we, our student achievement has increased. And so, that they, that has met the board's expectations and what the board had asked for 10 years ago. And so, with that, I just, you know, I'd like to make that comment that that's where we're at and why we're where we are.
Okay, anyone else want to make a comment? I would like to add that the Finance Committee did meet and discuss this, and this is the approval of the Finance Committee that we move with this, and so...
Can I add something to that?
Certainly.
The, I had forgotten what I was going to say. Go ahead.
Having a senior moment. Somebody else have a comment? Dr. Hodges, we did evaluate him from the board, and he received highly effective, effective, somewhere in between there, so his evaluation was quite good from the board. So with that being said, did you think of what you were going to say?
No. I'll think of it after the meeting.
Ralph?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make the motion to table this to January meeting.
Motion has been made that we...
Table it till January.
Okay, and a second? Any discussion? All right, we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Three, okay. All those opposed, raise your right hand. So we're tied.
That would mean that is as if the motion never happened. There's no majority, so the issue still lingers.
Meaning that we need to do what? Just move past it?
Well, then that effectively tables. You could leave it open for the floor if someone wants to make a motion to either accept it. The recommendation from the Finance Committee, they want to reject the recommendation from the Finance Committee, or I guess you could have another motion to table it, and those are your options. Or as chair, you could just decide to move on, which effectively establishes a table.
All right, we'll move on and meet in executive session at the end of this meeting. Okay? With that being said, then we need to move on to, where are we? Here we have the papers. Okay, the recommend approval of the professional services agreement with Schmidt and Associates. That would be Ms. Tolle.
Thank you, Mr. Virchus. I want to make sure that everyone received and had time to review the updated recommendation that was sent out yesterday and out of your place settings. The original recommendation did not include Spartan Bowl floor because we had not received the information from Schmidt and Associates, and it did indicate that we would be sending out that information beforehand. So the revised recommendation is to recommend Schmidt and Associates for the roofing project at Everton, for the vestibule reconfiguration at Connorsville High School, for domestic water piping in the Waterloo section of Connorsville High School, for planned development for future use regarding our grounds and athletic facilities, and then for Spartan Bowl floor, the modification, if you would choose to consider it. The Everton roof and Spartan Bowl floor architectural designs would be paid from the Rainy Day Fund. The entry vestibule reconfiguration and the athletic fund plan would be paid from Capital Projects. And the fees related to the Waterloo water project, water piping project would be paid from Capital Projects and from the Rainy Day Fund. So we have you Schmidt and Associates many times in the past and have had a positive working relationship thus far and would like to continue that arrangement. I am not recommending the Connorsville High School elevator modernization or the addition of a new elevator at this time. I do believe we need to address that in the future, but perhaps with a future bond issue that would replace retiring debt, it would be bundled into that type of project. I'll be happy to ask, answer any questions that you might have.
I have a question about the Spartan Bowl floor. Do we know what's, yet today, what's causing that?
No. We have met with the city just last week, and they are going to try and help determine what's caused that. They've gone back to look at some designs, and they'll be back in touch with us.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We don't, there isn't anyone who met who wants to put down a new floor without having an idea of why we have periodic issues with something of the floor.
And I understand that.
Yeah. So it will be addressed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chaney, what about the Fields, the master plan? What does that entail?
It is where they come in and look at the ground that we have available and the current state of our facilities, and look at the best possible design for things that we need to do. We have some issues related to the girls' softball diamond and the JV baseball field. If you recall, we had in the Capital Projects Plan and had talked for a while about building a concession stand and restrooms there. But we didn't want to proceed with that if we needed to do some redesign of those areas. The soccer field, the girls' baseball, the JV baseball, they're not behind a gate of any sort. So we lose a considerable amount of gate receipts for athletic because we really don't have a way to get the patrons to pay or show their identification for those events when they have a pass. Additionally, we have issues related to the tennis courts. They expand and then contract on an annual basis, they butt up against the building. We know that we're going to have to address the replacement of the tennis courts, probably in the near future. We have had conversation with them. We want them to assess whether that's the best place for the tennis courts, or if we need to be moving them perhaps up on the hill or on some other piece of land that we have for consideration to get them away from the expanding and contracting that they will normally have expanding and contracting. But in addition to that, being butted up against the building, they shift with the buildings expanding and contracting, which adds to the problems that we experience with our tennis courts. The last layer of the onion, I think, is there's been discussion about whether we could add some events over in the area where the football and the boys' baseball. If there is enough land in that area to perhaps move a soccer field, and what would that entail to get that type of ground ready? So those are the things that we have pointed out to them, and then we would expect anything else that they would want to do, just to look at all of our stuff in general and help us prioritize, help us get the best lay of the land, and make some suggestions.
So this would be significant changes, no doubt, now, how it's set up now?
It could be. It could be, yes, if they would come back.
Just trying to find the most effective use of the property that we have.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, does anyone else have a question? All right, do I hear a motion to approve Schmidt Associates here?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Spurler. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Taylor? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Next, we have the 2015 school board meeting calendar. Dr. Hodges?
Board in your packet, you have a copy of a proposed meeting schedule. It basically looks like the second Tuesday of every month, with the exception in August. We do have an additional meeting for a budget work session. It does start, most meetings, at 6:30. Does call out, as you recall, typically in February and in April. We talk about evaluations of different employee groups. Those meetings do start typically a little earlier than the 6:30 meeting. So this is typically when we approve the date, so we know when it is we're going to get together to talk about business. So it pretty much follows what we've done before. Sometimes in April, we fluctuated, done the second Tuesday and sometimes the third, but there's been some changes in how the teacher riff, layoff, whatever you want to call it, firing terminated. That process has all changed. We had tried to, because fall break, the spring break is so late, we tried to give some extra time in there to work with cases, the rare cases that we had with folks, but we're not recommending that this year.
All right. Any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the calendar?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Savoy. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please...
Is that a vote of election?
Yes, it does. It does not conflict with election at all.
Any other discussion question? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. We have recommended course changes. Dr. Reiki?
Thank you, Mr. Virchus. Our members of the board, we have a few things looking forward to for next year we'd like to have airput on. Curriculum Committee met on November 4th, and they wanted to discuss course changes recommended by the building curriculum of the high school and of the middle school. We have the Introduction to Advanced Manufacturing and Logistics. It's designed for juniors and seniors, and it's a dual-credit early college high school course. Advanced Manufacturing 1, it's designed for juniors and seniors as well, and is a dual-credit early college high school course. Leadership Development in Action, it's a one semester project-based course intended for students participating in career and technical leadership projects such as FFA. Quantitative Reasoning Course is one semester course in the career and tech ed pathway and is a dual-credit course. So as you can see, we're really looking at expanding the dual-credit opportunities for our high school students. In addition, the middle school would like to offer an advanced English in the enriched series, class for 7th and 8th grade students that are, to stretch them and challenge them at a higher level than we have been in the past. And so, we would like to study in it. And so, we would like to study and alter that curriculum so it is more rigorous and meets the needs of those particular students. Does it have any questions, Juanne?
Is this required additional staffing?
No, the staffing on any of these is the same.
Okay.
For the way to some training, we have to, we learn things and, and gain, but no additional staff is required. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reiki. So, do I hear a motion to rec, to approve these course changes?
Mr. President, I'll make the motion to approve these course changes.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Kilton. Any further questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, that completes the action items for this evening. We now move into discussion items, and Dr. Baer.
Thank you again, Mr. Burchett. When we looked at outsourcing our food service program about four years ago, we chose a company that has been in Chartwells. We entered into a marriage, and I can, happy to say in our fourth year, we're still married. So, it's a good thing.
We've had a lot of counseling.
Every Friday morning.
Every Friday.
Every Friday morning religiously. But seriously, it's been a, it's been a great relationship and very collaborative and working with Siobhan, our food supervisor. And with her tonight is Mr. Gene Sanchez, regional vice president, Gene Waven, and also Paul Kendall, the new district manager. So, we're pleased to work with both of them. But tonight, we're here to, we've accomplished a lot over this last three and a half years and halfway through year four, and with that, I think we're going to take some time tonight and celebrate a couple of those accomplishments and recognize some folks. So, I'm going to turn it over to Siobhan and let her run with the ball, so to speak, so it's all yours.
Hello, everyone. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. First thing, I just, I'm not sure if any of you noticed, but our logo has changed. And you also have a keychain and a pen in front of you. This, this is actually a new change after 17 years. We've, we've decided to refresh our logo and really enforce our commitment to our students. And so, you can see that the apple is a subtle C, and so, it is a, just our, symbolizing our commitment to eat, learn, live, which is building our strong bodies, our strong minds, and establishing the foundation for long healthy life of our students. So, with that said, I'm going to go into our fall update. There we go. For the, this was last year, so 2013, '14 food service financial update. As you can see, we sold, we had a total meal served of 935,832 meals, which I, yes, very impressive. Believe it or not, the most impressive number to me, and that's just because I'm behind the scenes, is the breakfast participation. We, yeah, those, those meals, last year, we increased breakfast participation at Connersville Middle School by 20% when we implemented universal breakfast. So, every student at middle school receives a free breakfast regardless of their status. So, now, that includes, so we also do that at Frazee, Fayette Central, and then this year in August, we implemented that at Eastview Elementary as well. Our financial update, so this is just our, our actual dollars. Revenue is the total student adult sales, $495,000, $96,039. Catering sales, this, again, this is something that prior to Chartwells, Fayette County really did not, didn't have. They didn't really have a catering department. From what Dr. Baer had shared with me, it was little things here and there. So, over the last four years, we've progressively reached, you know, $40,000 and almost $41,000 in sales. And my hope is to actually increase your catering by another $20,000. If, if, I, I did the magical dinner last week, and that was the largest catering event that we have done for your school district, so I was very happy about that. It was about 220 each night, and so, we were able to, to do that. And all of those, all of that came, you know, that's a service to the district, and we also were able to make that profit for the school district. The reimbursement, that is the dollars that we receive from the government for all the meals that we've served. And then your net profit and loss to the food service fund is $98,000, so almost $99,000. Summer feeding, our food truck meals served this year was 12,870 meals, and that is with, you know, with lunch, supper, and snacks. It's a 5% growth year on year. And then our total meals served is over 30,000, 30,765 meals. That is with our camps, our summer school, breakfast, lunch, snack, and the food truck included. Fall promotions, we've done actually a lot of fall promotions recent, just this, this fall. I've been, I was on maternity leave, so I just returned here at the end of November. But one of the things that I was really most proud of and I wanted to highlight was our chef's table featuring Jacobson-Bridgford artisanal cheese, which is made locally here in Connersville. I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with Ms. Jacobs, she used to be here on the board. We actually, our food focus for one of our months was dairy. And so, one of my ideas was I would really like to introduce artisanal cheeses to these, to the students. Most of our students know Kraft, Kraft cheese. That's, that's basically our Velveeta. It's Kraft or Velveeta. And so, I really wanted to educate them and, and explain to them that there are different cheeses out there, different textures, tastes, you know, et cetera. So, it was actually Dr. Baer who, you know, reminded us that Leslie had a farm and that she would be a great person to partner with. So, we did it at the middle school and the high school, and they loved it. They really did. I mean, some of them, you know, it was stinky, and so, they, they had a lot of great comments coming back and forth, but they, they had a ball. So, it was very good. Our goals for this year, the top goal I'm very excited about, I don't know if, if most of you, some of you here, I know Cabinet knows I'm all about technology. The introduction of Nutrislice app will roll out here for March 2015. And this is an app that our students and our parents and our faculty can put on their phone. It's a company where they will upload all of my menus for Fayette County along with all of our recipes. And so, everybody will be able to look up and see what all the ingredients, what the ingredients will be in all of our menu items along with the calories and our carbohydrates and trans fats, everything that you possibly need. So, our nurses, this will be their best friend. They will love this for their diabetic students. And anybody that has any, you know, severe allergies, parents will be able to look this up on their phone or on the internet, and they'll be able to look and look at our recipes, be able to see, you know, what allergy, if there's an allergen that their child can have for the menu item that day. The next goal is the after-school snack program at the middle school and the high school. I just actually got word today from the DOE that they will approve us to do a after-school snack program. This was with Janie. Janie and I kind of collaborated together. It was really Janie who came to me. She wanted to serve more meals to our students, to our athletes. That's really what we're looking at, is the athletes. We're trying to focus on them. And so, I talked to the state today, and they said that we will be able to, to have a snack program that, as long as we have an enrichment program, which with Beth and Randy, they said that's not a problem. We will have an enrichment program. And so, we will be able to serve snacks to our athletes before they get on the bus to their games. They will actually be able to physically take it with them, which that made me very happy because then we don't have any time constraints. Upgrade of our ovens at Fayette Central, those were the, those ovens that we still have are probably about 20, 25 years old, and they were the last ones to be upgraded. I know when, before Chartwells came in 2010, there was a lot of funds that upgraded certain equipment. Those ovens did not get upgraded. So, my hope is that, you know, by the end of the year, we'll probably upgrade those. Finalized the design plans for the retired dish room at CHS. So, we're working to get into phase two. Last year, the goal was for the new dish room at the high school, which it was completed and has increased our effectiveness to clean and, you know, get dishes and everything taken care of quickly. And so, now, the next phase is starting with the retired dish room. So, we're going to finalize those designs and hopefully in the next year or so, you know, put, put a, put our outtake slash teachers lounge in place. Add two more sites to the summer food truck on the east side of Connersville. The, that is one thing that we have a need is on the east side. And so, we, I just, I've been finding it very difficult to partner with apartment complexes in different places for me to pull the truck in so I can feed certain kids. We originally, our first year, had Conner Court Apartments, but for whatever reason, I think it was just, it was too congested. It wasn't really working for them and for us. So, now, I'm just trying to find at least two more sites on that side. So, if any of you have any recommendations, I'm always open for suggestions. And then the introduction of Annie's Frozen Yogurt at CHS, that will hopefully roll through when we come back from Christmas break. Because of all the new smart snack regulations, I'd say some of the students would like something new that they could buy à la carte wise, and so, this meets the smart snack regs, so I'm really excited about that. I think your students are going to like it. And then our B-Star update. This is where I'm going to introduce Gene Sanchez. He's going to talk about our B-Star.
He's going to talk about you.
Well, let me just preface this. One thing, remember last year I told you always bridesmaid, never bride?
And what does that have to do with me?
First, thank you for having me today. I really appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to the board. As Dr. Baer said, I'm the regional vice president for Chartwells, kind of for the upper Midwest. I have eight states and about 64 different districts. And we talked a little bit ago about the new logo and what the seeds represent, eat, learn, and live. For us, eat is the food that we feed to our kids every day. Learn is really getting them educated on what the foods are and how they help them learn during the course of the day. And then live is not only do you develop this habit now when you're in kindergarten, first, second, third, fifth, seventh, 12th grade, but you take it with you and you have a lifelong eating habit that's healthy and really is a change. In today's environment, that's very difficult. It's not something that I was trained on, but it's really important, and we take that really to heart. I think if we look back at last year in Fayette, we increased 20%. And we talked about breakfast there, but day versus day, we had a 17% increase across the district in breakfast. We actually increased lunch by 1% across the district. Snacks, over 200% across the district. The summer food truck is a great story. We reach out and we're able to take care of students that really need us to take care of them. 13,000 meals from the food truck is fantastic. 31,000 summer meals is really great. And then we talk about things like student engagement, parent engagement, how we talk to the board, how we talk to faculty. Those are all things that happen here that really don't happen in every district. And I think that's really fantastic. The partnership here really, I think, delivers for the students as much as we would like it to, and for that reason, this year, I'm going to come break out my little trophy. No longer the bridesmaid. Siobhan, congratulations.
Thank you.
For the regional account of the year for Chartwells K-12 in 2014.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For all you do.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for letting us be your partners here. We really enjoy it.
And finally, questions? So, does anybody have any questions regarding food service? Okay. Well, thank you all. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, and the other gentlemen for being here for the presentation. And congratulations.
I eat it every day.
Okay, moving on then to the next discussion items. Recognition of Dave Jones, Dr. Hodges.
We'll take care of it.
I have to do that later. Okay. Are there any other public comments? All right, discussion groups, superintendents discussion groups, principals or director reports, director personnel report.
Thanks, Mr. Burchett. Just a couple of quick items. One, speaking of kind of piggybacking off of our Chartwells, they will be providing lunches at Maplewood Elementary during our winter break on the Monday, Tuesday, and Friday, both Christmas week and New Year's week, 22nd, 23rd, 26th, and also the 29th, 30th, and 2nd. So, that will be, good turnout, I'm sure for that we've had pretty good success with that, so we're looking forward to providing meals to those students who are able to get to that site.
As we don't have any snow.
Yeah, no snow.
No snow.
We've already put in the order for that, so it should be a good shape, so. And I just take the opportunity to thank all of our subcommittees that I personally have an opportunity to work with, like our safety committees, our non-union, uncertified committees, and our longest committee, which many members participate, and they put a lot of effort into those things, and working a number of projects and goals in those areas too, including upgrading our job descriptions and employee handbook and just to name a couple. But they work very, very hard. They dedicate their time voluntarily, and I really appreciate their efforts, not only this year, but throughout every, so they make that those committees go, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Finance report.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. I just wanted to let the board know that we have completed the budgeting process. I've received the 1782 budget order from the Department of Local Government and Finance, have reviewed it. We did have to make a reduction to the general fund of $280,000 to the budget that was approved, $27,000 to transportation for 2015, and I did need to adjust transportation appropriations for 2014 due to the transfer that we approved last year because, or not last year, last month, to the rainy day fund. Because we made that transfer of cash, we did not have sufficient appropriation to support cash expenditures at the level approved for this year. So, budget for 2015 is all buttoned up with the state, and we'll be ready to roll the first of the year. Thank you for your help in that process.
Thank you. Assistant superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Board, I just wanted to share some information that Mr. Judd has been continuing to work on the dual credit options for our students, and he has shared with me recently that we're expanding our partnership to include Ball State University, which is going to, if everything works out as, as planned, to offer Japanese III and IV as an option to students as dual credit. They don't have to take it as dual credit, but just having the partnership there and making sure the teacher has the right certification, not a new teacher, the same teacher, then we'll be able to offer dual credit to the students and add to that. In addition, he also has a staff member that has gotten approved by IU to take our current speech class and, and allow dual credit option, opportunities for that as well, and that is through IU. So, I think it's just continuing to, you know, add to the rigor and the strength of what we're currently offering, and it's nice that our students can take advantage of these. So, he has a few things to work out in the details and make sure we have everything in line, but that's around the horizon. So, thank Mr. Judd for his effort with that.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's report.
I have nothing.
Okay, no report there for the good of the cause.
I'd like to, again, and I know I sound like a broken record, but I'd like to thank our community for all the involvement they take in our school corporation. Tonight, we, we received $1,000 from Walmart. We received a book donation for all of our fourth grade classes from Historic Connersville. We received a donation of $660 from the East Central Indiana Board of Realtors for the CHS food pantry, and a donation from Russ Shelby Energy for the CS Coral Department valued at $4,032. Our community always supports us. They continue to support us, and I just want the community to know that I, that we appreciate their support. And I guess in conclusion, the, the last thing I'd like to say is I'd like to remind everyone how important it is for us in life to follow through on commitments that we make, that we follow through completely. Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have a, for the good of the cause? Okay, with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
Second motion.
And Mr. Kilton? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. The executive session will start at a quarter till eight.